Hearing non-scene, now the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
No.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
No.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Unfinished business, number one, this is a tabled subject, have to have a motion to take it off the table and a second, and a vote of four votes to take it off the table, to take action.
To discussion, you mean, not to take?
Yeah, to have discussion on the issue, to get it off the table. Motion to remove it from the table?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember McCullough, second.
Am I allowed to?
Yes.
Support?
Supported by Councilmember Byrne. Clerk, please take the roll, no discussion until it's taken off the table, if so.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
No. Okay, motions on the floor, the motion's already on the floor, so discussion, comments, concerns?
Mayor Muller, if I could?
Councilmember Byrne?
Mike Louth wanted to be here tonight, he was here the first time it was on the table, he couldn't, he did try to send an email to everybody to let him know his thoughts on it, he's the owner of Port Huron Building Supply, I got a copy of his email that kinda contains his comments, figured I'd let everybody have a copy of that. In addition, I got a few amendments I was hoping to make to the amendment, to the proposal in order to make it more palatable, to some.
Mayor Muller?
Mayor Pearl Tim Fisher.
I mean, I voted to bring this off the table just for discussion at this point, where Councilmember Stevens is not here this evening, and I know this is something she was interested in, personally, I'd be more comfortable waiting till she's here to vote on this. I know we had asked administration to prepare some type of report, if there's any idea of any cost impact on this. Just for clarity's sake, some people brought up the idea of residences also, and that already does exist, as Ms. O'Neill mentioned, with the in-ground sprinkler systems, which would be the main water use in a residence that wouldn't be metered, so that already exists. But, I know I was hoping for a little more clarity from administration on this.
Mayor Muller?
Does administration have a report, or no?
No, not at this time.
Councilmember Byrne?
Just to clarify, this is just a first step to get the process going, there'd have to be ordinance changes, which require a first and second reading, and then a third and final reading. Part of the amendments I have is to include language, such as limits on it, and to prepare an estimate of potential loss of revenue and different things like that to it, so that we could get that report and get things moving in the right direction. And then, before we actually voted on the first and second reading, Lonny would be here by then. To me, I don't see a big harm in just getting the information going, getting to find out what the impact would be, what our options are, just to get the plan starting to get evaluated, at least.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Dorn?
Am I understanding, then, that Councilman Burns is amending his motion to the matters on three, four, five, six, and seven, for, at this point, is that what I'm hearing you say?
He would like to do that, he hasn't made a motion today.
Eliminating the other aspects, is that, does that mean, there's, prepare the necessary ordinance changes, and prepare the means, would delay that until three, four, five, six, and seven are presented to council, is that what you're suggesting?
Well, currently, the proposed, the agenda item was just, had a one and a two. The number one is pretty much the same, except it includes residents. And number two, changes the date to January 31st, instead of December 31st, with the holidays and all, I figure they'll be pushing it to have a report done by then. The additional ones was to include language to limit it to those with a three-inch water line or less, or 700,000 feet, whichever is easier to administer. I know, most places I've been, they do it by water meter, or line size going in, it's just an easier thing to regulate and harder for people to change, because the meter only takes certain sized lines. Prepare an estimate of potential lost revenue, if this were to be fully implemented, or what the expected amount of people taking advantage of it would be, propose budget cuts to offset, and estimate revenue that could be replaced, if, for instance, we, living by the park there, I see tank wagons fill up constantly all summer long with water. That does not pay any sewer charges on it currently, I don't know where that water's going, if it's going to the sewers or sanitation, or where that's going eventually. See, going outside the city, staying inside the city, I don't know. That would be one area, possibly to pick up the revenue on, since that water wouldn't be going into a product or anything, it would just be going back into the drain somewhere, possibly, depending on what its usage is. So, to me, these were a step in the process to get it going. I know Lonny had concerns with offsetting the lost revenue, so that's kinda why I had a couple things in there, to see what the options might be. And to me, this just gets the ball rolling, to get the study done, some information together, get the language done, to see what, how it would read. And it by no means puts it into effect or anything like that, it just gets the ball rolling and gets it formalized, I guess would be the way to talk about it.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Dorn?
I would like to see items four, five, six, and seven be done in advance, of asking the city to prepare the billing process and the ordinance process, go through all that work until we've seen the numbers, and know whether there's enough support, based on those numbers on council, to put the city through all the necessary work, to write ordinances, and set up a billing system, and all of the things associated with that.
Mayor Muller? Councilmember Lewandowski?
John, can I ask you a couple questions? Our water usage is down about 10% already this year, is the last number I think you?
For the, if we look at water production for the 12 months through November, it is down a little less than 10%, but very close to 10%.
Now, if we were to have a study to go into these businesses and find out how much water they're using, is there any real way we could find out what kinda water, like, can you estimate, is there, do you have a formula for doing that? Like, what water's gonna go into the sewer, and what's gonna be used for, for the thing to offset our cost, like, to find out how much we're gonna lose?
You may be asking the wrong guy, this may be more of a Bob question, but, I mean, my understanding, we talked residential for use first, if you have an in-ground sprinkler system, irrigation system, if it's installed by a certified plumber and meets certain standards, then you can currently have a separate water meter for that use. So, you know, that's one aspect that we may be able to do some estimating on. In terms of commercial businesses, if we're talking about water that doesn't return to the system, that may require us to know more about their processes than we'd necessarily know. I mean, presumably, if they're recycling water within their system, eventually, it is being returned to our system. It's really more if the water becomes part of production, that it isn't returned. And, you know, I don't know, our pretreatment people who get out to the industries may have that kind of information, or it may involve us doing some kinda surveys to learn, you know, but it requires some knowledge of the industrial process, or the commercial process.
And lastly, can we discriminate, isn't there, I remember you saying something about a federal law about, can we discriminate against a three-inch water line compared to somebody who had a smaller or bigger water line?
Well, when we got into the low-interest loan programs, the sewer estate revolving, the SRF loans, and on the water side, the drinking water revolving fund loans, one of the things that the initial, the rate consultant told us 10 years ago, when we were starting in that process, was that we needed to have a rate system in place that was the same for all users. He looked at our system, and it, we met those requirements. So, that's really about all I know about it, is that you're supposed to have a system that treats all of your users the same. That'll be one of the issues I think we'd need to do research on, is if there's a different method of billing, depending on the size of your meter. I mean, certainly now, the readiness to surcharge varies with the size of the meter, but, you know, there's a rationale for that. We'd have to look at the other area and see, I'm not really familiar with the details of the rules, other than to know that they're there, and that currently, we abide by them.
And that's so, if we broke that, we wouldn't qualify for the low-interest loans that we're using for the CSO project?
Well, I mean, I think-
I'm saying hypothetically, if we broke that, and we didn't qualify, okay?
There is that potential, you know, I'm sorry, I'm just not familiar enough with the rules to know for sure, but certainly, it sounds like we could potentially have a problem, it's something we'd have to take a look at. I mean, and generally, in these kinds of cases, you also take a look at what are other communities doing, what do their ordinances say? Do they have similar issues, what did they do to deal with it?
I can speak for what Marysville does, being a customer, there's, where I work, they charge different rates for different meter, line sizes coming in. I don't know if they have the low-interest loans or not, but-
Probably not.
-it's done commonly, for different sized users, get different rates, based on pipe size.
Offhand, I don't remember seeing Marysville on the list, I mean, potentially, they could get drinking water money, for upgrading drinking water lines, they don't have the, they're not getting SRF money, to my knowledge.
I voted to keep it on the table, and I'll explain my vote. I'm not opposed to this, however, residential usage, people can have two different meters in the residential. I have two in mine, long before I ran for council. I'm not opposed to doing this for the businesses, however, I agree with Councilmember Dorn, that we need to do more study to find out what the revenue loss is. Because if the estimations are right, and what I've heard of $1.2 million or whatever, of lost revenue, I don't wanna pass that on to Joanne Rumford, or anybody else that's a resident of this city. I don't wanna raise water rates for citizens to give a break to companies at this point. Not that I'm opposed to this, but I just don't think it's appropriate to raise, in these poor economic times, if the result is that we have to raise residential water rates. I am definitely opposed to this, I agree with Mr. Dorn, that, you know, maybe the study should be done by the administration to come back and tell us exactly how much, or give us a guesstimation anyway, of what the revenue loss would be, before we take action like this. But for the common citizen out there, they can get separate meters that they so desire, for a fee, and so. I won't support it tonight, as it is, if we vote on the motion as it is, simply because I'm not gonna raise, I am not gonna support raising water rates for the citizens of the city, just to lower it for commercial customers, at least not at this time. Mayor Muller? Councilmember McCullough?
This could be a question for Mark, Councilmember Byrne, I mean. Hearing, I know you wanna get the ball rolling, what if we just directed the city to do the, your, like Marty had suggested, to do your three, four, five, six, and seven, those points, and put a date certain on it, like the first meeting, or second meeting in January? That gets the ball rolling for us, to look at it, at least, and you know it's not gonna be set aside, what would you feel about that?
If I may, my-
Councilmember Byrne?
I'm perfectly okay, as long as we do something, and not just do nothing, and getting the ball rolling is a good step, even if it's not quite as far as I wanted to roll it today, but at least in the right direction. My intent is not to raise the rates on anybody, I do not wanna make up the revenue by charging anybody extra money that is a resident, or anything like that. The residents who are able to afford an in-ground sprinkler system can afford to get a second meter, but that's pretty much not the entire city, as most of them cannot afford, and in a sprinkler system, so to me, that's a little unfair, from my point of view on it. So, this kinda levels the playing field a little bit more, in my mind, between those who can afford it, and those who can't afford it. But my intent is not to increase water rates on anybody here, but to help keep businesses alive. You read Mike's letter, they're not doing real well, the economy's tough, there's several jobs there we're talking about. They pay a lot of revenue in taxes each year, we might lose their sewer revenue, but we're gonna lose a whole lot more if these businesses go under. So, I'd like to at least get it rolling, and if I could, I'd like to propose an amendment to it, to drop number one and two from the current proposal, and add three, four, five, six, and seven to it, just to get the ball rolling.
Mayor Muller? You making a motion?
Yep.
Sorry.
Need a second to the motion, though.
Mayor- Ask if it was better to speed the motion and reintroduce it as a new one.
I do have a couple of questions.
I'll support.
Mayor Pearl Tim Fisher supports?
Yeah.
Comments, questions, concerns? Mayor Muller? Councilmember McCullough?
What would be the easiest way to approach this? Because I know adding and subtracting would probably cause you to have a headache.
I think my, I think the easiest way would be to, we simply can direct the administration to do the study on four, five, and six. Postpone, correct me, Jim, if I'm right, postpone the motion that's before us until a specific date, and direct the city administration to come back with a report at that time, and then we can amend the dates, one and two. I think that would be the easiest way to do it. Mayor Muller? Councilmember Dorn?
Spending considerably more time than I ever have around City Hall these days, I know that these guys have a lot of, they're jumping through a lot of hoops right now for the city council, and doing a yeoman's job with reports, and getting back to us, and handling everything from parking to this, that, and the next thing, and we have Christmas and New Year's, and a study of this magnitude, as John described it, trying to learn what these businesses, and the real impact of these businesses. I question whether we're gonna have any, we would have any real data before us by the middle of January, that we could, and, and Mark, that we could, that it won't just result in another postponement. Giving the city enough time to do a reasonable job on this, to get into this, I, it's a long-term decision, a huge decision, and taking the time, even three or four months, and I know that's not getting the ball rolling, as you would say, but to survey these businesses, try to find out this information, I just know what it's been like in the last few weeks, to get all the parking issues resolved, that's been meeting after meeting after meeting, and so this is just a, I would see it as a monumental task. And I just would ask the city council perhaps to consider giving the administration a bit more time on this, and remembering that we have an interim city manager at this time, and-
What are you looking for?
I would like to see something in the spring, more realistically.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Lewandowski? I think there's only so much that we, as a council, can do to help businesses out, and we give them lots of tax breaks, and it comes to a point at some time that they gotta start making decisions that are gonna help themselves, so. The paper companies all paid to put in the water lines that draw water out of the lakes, and they did that at a large cost themselves, because they saw this coming down the road. If you look at our water rates, we have still some of the cheapest in the state, and, you know, people complain, oh, my water bill's $132 or $138. If you look at your cable, my cable bill's more than that a month, and your water bill is quarterly, so, I mean, you're looking at 30, you know, 40 bucks a month, is not an excessive amount of money. And we do have problems coming down the future, we have, you know, lots of loans coming up with $185, or $185 million project, that we have to fund some way, and we haven't raised the water rates, and we're losing money now, because we haven't been selling as much water. And here we go, we're gonna add another, another problem to this, is taking away money and trying to find some anywhere else in our general fund to cover this loss that we will be taking, and that's the point, the water, you know, we don't charge excess, we don't make money on selling the water, it's something that breaks even for the city. So, I, as much as I like Port Huron Building Supply, they are a good union company, I would, I'm not in favor of this, and I would like to try to get it off the business, for-
Mayor Muller?
Mayor Pearl Tim Fisher?
I would actually like to introduce a, well, I can't, we already have one.
We have a more-
We have an amendment on the table, so I can't do anything, but purpose of discussion, actually, I was looking at the calendar, I think our February 23rd meeting. By that date, I think we can have a report ready by then, that would address most of these points, and actually give us some answers, I would think.
Any other comments, questions, concerns, of the motion?
Mayor Muller, just one last one. February 23rd, while not as quick as I want, does work, my main concern is, when the building season starts, will they know what they can bid contracts on? So, getting this done for the April, May timeframe, when they're trying to bid on jobs to get the cement business, and keep the jobs here, keep open, would be good.
I would also like to see a public hearing set on this, too, because I have not had one single company call me. Mike Louth, I see his letter that he gave you, but I've had no, I don't know about the other councilmembers, other than you, Mark, I know that you had this up, but I haven't had anybody contact me. Councilmember Lewandowski?
You know, Mark, as you were saying, too, or Councilmember Byrne, they are, Port Huron Building Supply, if they want to, could take a tanker truck down to the water filtration plant and buy the water without the sewer charge. Now, there are some other charges, and it's, you know, it's, I don't think it'd be any cheaper, but, in the long run, if that little bit of sewer money was gonna make it more profitable for them to keep a couple jobs here, I think that they could do that, and, you know, that's not gonna save them money, I don't see how cutting the sewer out of the water they use. Now, I don't know, I haven't been in that building in a while, but I think they wash their trucks in the same spot that they fill and mix the cement, so now, how are you gonna monitor what, and where that water's going, after they wash the trucks, instead of just mixing it into the cement? We don't, we don't know that, and that's gonna be something that, you know, yeah, they might pass a code, but it wouldn't be that hard to change the water line around, and I'm not saying that they would do that, but, and you can't, and I think it's hard to monitor inside a facility like that, where, because when you're on the outside of a house, the meter's on the outside, but I would expect, and, you know, these places, the meters are probably on the inside, or places where it's not export, or easy to get to.
Or it doesn't freeze.
Or it doesn't freeze, yep, and, so, how do you monitor if they are using that water to, you know, wash out their trucks, or wash out the cement trucks, or mixing the cement, I mean, it's, it's one of those things that I don't, it sounds good, and I'd like to help out a company as much as I can, but I just don't think this is feasible for the city to take on this time.
Mayor Muller? Councilmember Dorn?
I'm having a real hard time asking the city, I mean, just listening to the discussion, it doesn't sound like the support is here for this under almost any circumstances, I just see this as a monumental task for the city to undertake. And if the council ultimately is not going to support Councilman Byrne's proposal, I just have a real difficult time asking them to do this nature of a study, and under this short of a timeframe. And, you know, I'm just not hearing the level of support for this, that would justify this much work on the behalf of our city employees.
I agree, and I would like to add that I won't support it until, if the city were to come back and tell, if the administration were to come back with a study that says that, I mean, I'm looking at a timeframe, I said, I would go with the April 23rd, but again, I think this is something that should be brought up during the budget process, and, you know, when we're gonna be making cuts, and, and that certainly would give the administration a lot more time to come up and say, hey, look, if you do this, it's gonna cost you $1.2 million, find the money someplace else where you're gonna cut, because I am not gonna support raising residential water rates, I promised the citizens that when I ran, and I'm not gonna do it, so. Mayor Muller? Councilmember McCullough?
I think this is a good discussion to have, I know there seems, there are some negative votes, it sounds like, at this point, but I would like to continue with this, just to get the information, I've just noticing from surrounding towns, if they allow this, this to happen for their customers, and the level's of playing field, it could possibly open this up for other businesses coming into town, and, I know, to me, it doesn't make, I definitely don't wanna raise the water rates, and that's why I appreciate Mark looking at possibly other ways to offset those losses. I don't wanna look into that, but I also wanna see that we're being fair to the businesses that actually use them in their process, and if it's not being reintroduced into the sewer system, then it doesn't seem like they should be charged a sewer rate at that point. And I am supportive of moving forward, at least getting the information, and not spending extra time preparing a new ordinance at this point, but at least having some background, more background, to make a better informed, or more informed decision, and February 23rd, to me, sounds a reasonable length of time out, and it also gets us closer to our budget process. Doesn't mean that February 23rd, we'd have to make a decision, been postponing this thing until next November, I guess, if we really wanted to. Next November, yeah, next election day. So, I just really would like to see some more information from the city's perspective, on what it would mean to us. I know I've heard the same number thrown around, I just wanted to confirm whether that's the case, or if it might be a smaller number, or what the effect would be, so. I would be supportive of not moving on with the ordinance, but just getting the background information at this point, along with some time to get some feedback.
Mayor Muller?
Thank you. Councilmember Byrne?
The $1.2 million, I believe, was the initial estimate, about a month or so ago, when I first brought this up and asked for some input. That was basically the four largest users, which would be over the 700,000 cubic foot limit. And if I remember right, it was like $1.2 out of the 6.8 million in revenue, so if that $1.2 is off the table already, that kinda limits the impact quite a bit. The surrounding communities all do this, I'd be pretty quick phone call to ask what percentage of your users are taking advantage of this, which ones aren't? You know, what type, hotels, restaurants, they're not gonna take advantage of this, they're almost exclusively sanitation. It isn't very hard to monitor, I've been in the chemical business for years, we've had separate meters, we've had water departments in, we've had DEQ in, we've had all kinds of people in. They check where your water goes, they wanna make sure you're not dumping stuff, the cement company can't rinse cement and dump it down the sewer into the drain, we don't want that. So, these are things that are normal business practices in most communities.
Mayor Muller? Councilmember Lewandowski?
John, just a quick question, is Fort Grashit's water rate higher than ours? Yeah, I don't know either, that's a-
I would imagine it is, just because they're further up the pipeline and tack a charge onto it, although they're delinquent on their bill last I heard.
Mayor and council, we haven't really looked at comparative rates in a few years, at one time, the rates were pretty similar in the surrounding communities. Marysville residential bills differently, they just bill on a fixed, but Marysville, commercial and industrial, was fairly close. But we haven't done that study in several years, so I'm not sure really where things are now.
Will you read the motion again, please, the amended?
It would be to drop one and two from the resolution, and add the three, four, five, six, and seven.
To amend the motion.
Correct.
Clerk, please take the roll, on the, this is on the amendment?
Councilmember McCullough?
And this is the original language?
This is the amendment.
To amend the original language. Drop these.
Drop those?
Right. And just do this.
Drop one and two, and add four, three, four, five, and six, seven.
Not with Jim's date, though.
No, not yet, not yet.
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
No.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
No.
Mayor Muller?
No.
Motion fails. We're back to the original motion.
Mayor Muller?
Mayor Pearl Tim Fisher?
I would entertain a motion to postpone this until our meeting of February 23rd, to give staff time to prepare answers to some of the questions that are actually listed on the sheet as three, four, five, six, and seven.
Second? Support? Supported by Councilmember McCullough. Discussion? Hearing non-scene none, motion to postpone until February 23rd. Clerk, please take the roll.
And we're to prepare a report?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
No.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
No.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Oh. Yes.
It does pass.
This one passes. You guys putting heat on me tonight? Where's Lonny, when you need her? Okay. From the city manager, number one.
Number one is notification that Richard Pack is being reappointed to the Port Huron Housing Commission for a five-year term, to expire December 19th, 2013.
The only reason that I, motion?
Mayor Muller?
Mayor Pearl Tim Fisher?
Move for the adoption from the city manager, number one.
Second? Support? Supported by Councilmember McCullough. The only reason I removed this from the consent agenda, I just wanted to say that I'm pleased to see that Mr. Pack is being reappointed. Him and his wife have done a lot of work, and have volunteered for a lot of things in the community over the years, and I just wanted to say thank you to the Pack family as a whole, and for their support in the community. All I wanted to say. With that, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. From the city manager, number two.
Is a recommendation that the bid from Carrigan Development for $7,400 for the demolition of 1301 Lapeer Avenue, which is code case number 08-004, be accepted.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Byrne, second.
Support?
Supported by Councilmember Dorn. Comments, questions, concerns?
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Byrne?
Just looking up these companies in the Yellow Pages, I was surprised to find how few are located in Port Huron. Just like to point out, it'd be nice to attract businesses here.
I would just like to say, Bob, looking at these bids, does everybody know there have been others?
Yes. Resolution number one.
Would authorize payments one through 21.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Pearl Tim Fisher, second.
Support.
Supported by Councilmember Lewandowski. Any comments, questions, concerns? Discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resolution number seven.
Would approve the request to have a plaque installed in Heritage Park on the Quay with all funds being raised by private donations for the purchase of the plaque and any dedication ceremony that may be subsequently planned.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lewandowski, second.
Support.
Supported by Mayor Pearl Tim Fisher. Any comments, questions, concerns? Discussion.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.